Yeah.
Get things rolling.
We've planned on it. We'll call the tonight's meeting to order at 6:34. We will do a roll call of members. John Randlett will be acting chairman. Bert Sutcliffe, Rhonda Bishop. Pat Roach is alternate. And Pat, if you would just take a seat at the table. And John Kelly, alternate. John, if you will take a seat at the table on any matters that we need to vote on.
I'll move down so you can slide in there.
We do have a quorum present tonight, so any votes that need to be taken. Looking at the agenda, we're not going to be that busy tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Open the...
You leave that there in case they make a mistake, they'll bring somebody else.
Now, item number three is public comments, and our number one citizen is not here tonight. So this is unusual that he's...
They'll deserve respite, I guess.
He misses a meeting. Item number four is administrative matters, and we have the minutes from November 4th. Do go ahead and review. Everybody have copies of those minutes?
Yes.
Do we have any changes on page one? Page four? There are no changes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. And page six. Do I have a motion on these minutes?
I'll move.
And I'll second it for November 18th.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then we have the minutes from the December 2nd work session. Any changes on page one? Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pat. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The minutes are closed. Very good. All right. Item number five is correspondence. Do we have any, no correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number six is reports of committees. Charlie Berman is not here. Paul Wilson's not here.
The ZVA did not meet this previous Tuesday for lack of a quorum, and they had no items on the agenda, so...
The Pemme Valley Water and Sewer District?
Yes. Just a couple of things, other than them spending us the people's money on some whoopsies. As far as I understand, is there CVS project that's going in? It's going to be a quick lineup and feed into our system. As far as the tractor supply, I understand, there's going to be some more understanding, more complications that we need to follow through with and understand.
Yeah. I had spoken to Kevin particularly about tractor supply, so he's got that well in hand in terms of, you know, expanding the infrastructure up there and everything.
Awesome.
Yep.
Super.
Okay. Thank you, Rhonda. Pemme Jawset River Local Advisory Committee. Watershed, to be, to be, to be. Town Planner Report, Sharon?
Nothing of any great consequence. It's the beginning of the year, so we're setting up calendars, trying to get organized. I do have some informational things to pass out, particularly the schedule, so if you'd like me to wait on that till afterwards...
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead and take care of it now.
I did email, but like I said, I never know who's got what, when, so...
I'll take one because I didn't print it out. I just looked.
Oh, sure. And I also have some handouts, Mr. Chairman, for your presentation, so we can do that when we begin.
I'm working on that.
Otherwise, we're just, I'm just about at the six-month mark here. It was a fast six months, enjoying it, and...
You're welcome.
Thank you. And the office is looking better. So, a little bit more purging done, but...
Find your desk now.
Yeah, I did find my desk.
Everybody has a different, a different methodology of working, and I know I used to be that way, and nobody could find anything except for me, and that's the way, that was the purpose of it.
This profession generates an awful lot of paper, so it's the nature of the beast.
Item number seven is new business, and under that, we have a discussion of the current capital improvement program, which I will do a short presentation, and Bert, if you would take one of those and pass it down, and whatever's left over, Sharon, if you would hold them...
Certainly.
And give them to the other board members when, at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Want to each of you have one?
Yeah, it's a set of two.
Oh, that's the same, I guess.
Right. It's a set of two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I pre-sorted for you. Tried to trick you.
It's late at night, sorry.
It's okay.
My day starts really early.
That's all right, Pat.
Okay. You know, basically, basically, the town has a capital improvement plan. Again, part of the requirements on the impact fee was that we do have a capital improvement plan in process. And basically, what you have, and this will be in the, in the town report, and it comes out every year. But we have capital reserve accounts. They are numbered. You have, like, the first item here is dispatch equipment. It has a basic principal amount. Then you have the equipment. Then you have a beginning balance. Again, this is a monthly statement. What you would see in the town annual report is you'll see the beginning balance as of July 1st, and then it will show any additions to the reserve and any expenditures. Now, any additions and any expenditures are approved at the town meeting. They're included in the budget. In other words, if they decided on the dispatch equipment, they were gonna, they were gonna go ahead and expend that money on the budget for the current year, they would have to show an expenditure for that item and show that it's coming out of the reserve. That would be approved at the town meeting. The same thing for any reserves. You know, if some new item comes up, some capital equipment or something like that, then again, that would have to be approved at the town meeting by the town to reserve those specific funds. When you look at this report, in the town report, you're going to see that they go forward, this 2009 report went through 2016. So basically, you know, if you have $250,000 that you want to reserve, and it's $50,000 over the next five years, it'll show out that way, and it'll show out in the town report. So basically, this is, this is what we have. You'll even see on here that we have some school district items that are, that are included in this, in this particular account. So does anybody have any, any questions, or...
If I may speak?
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is really appropriate time to discuss this. I was wondering whether to bring this subject up, but when you indicated the school districts...
This is...
...involved here, that I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, that $1.35 was raised on our taxes because of the school district in our tax base.
Mm-hmm.
If anybody's aware of what the raise was. And from what I understand, there's going to be a $4 per thousand based on their budget.
Not necessarily, and that's not hammered out yet.
That's, yeah, talk about the lack of state.
This is going to be presented...
Right.
And it's interesting for people to know the dates to remember to attend the meetings. It's going to be, the Pemme Baker School District meeting is going to be Thursday, February 10th at 6:30 PM. Plymouth Elementary School meeting is March 7th at 7:00 PM. The March Town Elections is going to be March 8th from 8 to 7, and the town meeting is March 9th at 7:00 PM. They can call the town, get more information, but it's very important, I think, that we're talking about the budget here and what our town is affected by. Between $1.35, which I personally got raised $300 from my last tax rate until now, and now they're going to go up to $4,000 just for the school budget alone, I'm hurting here. I don't know what's going on, but I think it's important that we all get aware of it.
Well, and again, this is...
And the people here in the public.
Yep. And this is one reason we stress people to go to these meetings, because otherwise, you have people making decisions at that meeting that affect each and every person in the community.
And everybody's just letting it go by, and we're not making decisions and helping people assisting them.
You're exactly right. And it's probably more important, I won't say it's more important, it's as important as turning out for the elections because of the fact that changes can be made at this meeting.
Absolutely.
And so, so, so it's very important for people to be there.
So I'm just thankful that you gave me that opportunity to address it at this point, now that you talk about...
Yeah. But again, this is, this is kind of, everything is approved by the town. We have this plan in effect. I think they've been using the system since 1987, I believe.
I have a kind of stupid question, just because I haven't seen this before. What's the negative signs of the principal mean? On some of them, like the...
They've had expenditures.
Expenditures before, so it was...
Right. And in other words, yeah, and some of them, some of them, the, the principal amounts, again, they reserved 150, and maybe they set the reserve, not having changed the principal amount, they reserved more than that.
Oh, I see.
So then, when there was an expenditure...
Yeah.
It, it came out, so, so, yeah. Yeah. And this is, this is just for your information to see what we, I mean, because again, in doing the calculations, we don't know what the interest is going to be, so these balances change. Lots of times, you might see a $165 there, and basically, what's happened is, we reserved $150,000. They spent $150,000, but that's the accumulated interest...
Right.
...over the period of time, and when they did the disbursement, they did not take the interest out. And that has to stay there until it's approved by the town to take that $165 out, so...
So these are the categories that have reserve, capital reserves?
Right.
So as a tool for us to try to come up eventually with our impact fee schedule, we'd be looking at these different categories and kind of seeing what types they are, the genres, the, you know, as it applies to services, and the impact of growth and development, both residential and commercial...
Right.
...on those services. But there's no additional categories, John? This is all we've got right now?
These are the categories right now. And the, and the other, the other thing is that as a new item is added, this money is allocated for these fees, and unless there's a warrant article...
Right.
...authorizing us to change those funds from one use to another use...
Can't, right.
It can't be done without being done at the town meeting.
Right. By the legislative body.
Right.
Good.
John, did you have your...
Yeah. On the impact fee, is that charged to, or will it be charged to nonprofit organizations in the school and the hospital when they start to enlade?
Well, we hadn't really gotten there yet. I mean, I, I'd have to look, you know, I'm not that familiar with the statutory language. We were just trying to muddle through on, on just basic categories to try to winnow it down, and then, then try to get to some sort of level.
We seem to have a majority of non-taxable property, and it would seem really unfair to, if somebody happened to come down the road that might pay some taxes to us, instead of us having to supply services to them...
In lieu of, right.
...we nail them with an impact fee where the nonprofits sail along without...
Well, it's supposed to be equitable, and that's part of our deliberations in our fact-finding, is to make it fair, so that nobody bears an unfair burden. You're right.
Can they legally be exempt from it?
I don't know. I'd have to look up.
The town school wouldn't have to come, town and state wouldn't have to come to the board at all, right? I mean, it's more of an informal...
Not, yeah.
I don't see how we could levy a fee if we have no...
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
I agree with the idea, but I'm just, it seems like, like anybody who's exempt from any more approval would be exempt from it.
They don't need planning, exactly. Site plan review.
And it's exempt from it.
But other nonprofits.
You know, I guess what I'm saying, I know I'm getting off the subject a little, but what I'm saying is, like Lowe's or some, or whoever might come in, you're penalizing them for coming to Plymouth, where all the nonprofit organizations, we welcome with open arms and don't have any mitigation. We don't have anything as far as that's concerned, and they build wherever they want with no impact fee, and somebody could pay maybe a few dollars in taxes, we nail them right between the eyes every time they try to get to Plymouth.
Well, and you know, I think Rhonda's gotten us a lot of basic information, what's going on in different areas, and, you know, as we just add information to our package, and then we start deliberating on, on exactly what we feel we need and what we think we need, and, you know, it'll be a process over the next year.
Isn't it, my understanding, it's still on the table, and we're still thinking about probably hiring an entity involved in this to...
Well, we're going to do...
Give us some more guidance professionally?
Possibly, but we were going to go back to the beginning, and, you know, we have to give them some sort of mandate and direction, right?
Who's them?
Well, whoever a consultant might be.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. So we're just trying to start at the beginning.
There was a reference, I think, that I gave.
Right.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, and we just, I think we basically want to get an idea where the board feels, and, you know, before, take a look at all the information, analyze it, talk about it.
Has it been addressed to the town attorney, and what is his feel for it? Do we have his opinion at all?
We've got, there's no need to go there now. I mean, it's, we could do...
I mean, we've been addressing this issue, and I'm...
No, but I don't understand your question. I mean, it's, it's in our zoning...
And it's been addressed as far as, like, legal, legalities? Like, we're concerned about where, if we address it, then we're, we can be in prosecution because we're addressing it, so where, does it apply?
Right. But he's going to ask us for specifics on, we're putting the cart...
A project? No, we're putting it into a...
Cart before the horse a little bit, that we're going to try to get some...
Program it, so...
Right. Get some basics, because he's going to ask for specifics, and we don't have specifics yet. But we'll get, we'll get there as part of the process. We're just really, we, we realized late last year that we, we were trying to set up numeric sched, fee schedules and stuff. We really didn't know what we wanted, so...
Oh, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And I think that's why we, we said, you know, before we go out, and we go out and spend money, spend tax dollars, that we, you know, we want to get an opinion, we want to...
Formula.
We want to, yeah. We want to come up with, with, with a formula that's going to be applied uniformly, and, you know, that what are, what are we looking to cover, and realizing that when you collect these fees, if they're not used in a certain period of time, then they're returned to those individuals. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot more work, I think, you know, that...
There's a lot of prep.
...that needs to go into it before we sit down with the attorney, town attorney, and, and get an opinion, and spend those monies there, so...
Now, one last question on this capital expenditure. What's the Highland Street one? Because that's like the largest one here. Is that money to do more work on that?
Sidewalks.
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
There's one, there's one section of Highland Street that all they did was put a top over.
Oh, okay.
They did not, you know, it has not been removed, it has not...
That's what this money's for, to...
Yeah.
Spin on the books, so that's really good.
Yeah, and, and that looks like a lot of money, but when you get into roads, it's just nothing.
Well, I know it's not, it's just one of the biggest ones.
It is big, though.
Yeah.
In comparison, it's been...
And, and again, you know...
I know, it's a mile of road.
Yeah. I will say, if anybody has any questions on any of these, any of these particular items, you know, feel free to give me a call, or you can talk to them at the town, but this comes out, like I say, in the town report every year.
I do have a quick question, now that he brings it up. You're talking some major money in the Highland Street, and it's beside walks. I walk it, and I've seen it, I drive by it all the time. I don't see any real need to top it. I'm wondering if there, these monies can go into, like, the side streets and resurface those?
I think they've been...
So how can you re, how can you redirect it?
I think they've been appropriated, I don't think...
Yeah.
You can't redirect it?
Basically, no.
That's what my question is.
No, basically...
If it's directed, then you're, it's got to go.
Yeah. Basically, what happens when the highway department sets up their budget?
It's got to go.
They, they, they include work on, on, they maybe set aside $60,000, and it's set aside for particular streets, and that's discussed when they do the budget and when everything's approved, and...
They have their schedule, maintenance schedule that they're anticipating.
And, you know, again, this is...
It'd be more beneficial if they were able to have that ability to redirect that kind of money to something more...
Well, well, again, this is something that can be done at a town meeting, you know? But, you know, it's not something that we're going to, you know, solve at this level. That's...
No.
That's probably a good question that people don't know.
We're actually really not here tonight to discuss this per se.
Right.
We're just seeing this as an example of where the monies are being put aside for, for future expenditures, and that's going to help guide us.
But, but, go ahead, John.
A lot of this is, there's two concepts. One concept, years ago, up until about four years, four or five years ago, was that they were going to put in X number of dollars every year for this capital, and at one point or the other, some of the town officials decided, why do we keep putting in all this money where sometimes it would never be used? You know, just, just, well, we need an enlargement of the airport. Well, it probably will never happen, but they were putting in thousands of dollars for improvement of the airport. So now, the, the concept is that when you need it, you buy it, you know?
You know, you use it, you lose it.
Yeah. So, so, so if somebody wanted to go back to the other concept of putting so much money in, this would be a much more leveled amount of money for all of the projects.
Right.
And that $434,000 probably would show up, but it would show up over a number of years.
Yeah. So, so again, that's, you know, for people to stay engaged, to talk to the town, you know, if they have problems on their streets and stuff like this, that's when they need to bring it up, you know? It's not going to get done at a town meeting, even though the reserves are voted on. But this is just an example of what we do have.
Right. And this is a balance. This isn't an annual appropriation. This is a balance to this point in time.
Right.
So it looks like there's a lot of money being shunted there every year, but it, I'm sure it's ordinarily how this works. As you know, it's accumulated over time in increments.
Yeah. And, and we had, you know, one perfect example was a library expansion that was $75,000 in that. They pulled that out, so there's nothing in there now.
Yep.
And so...
Well, that's what it was for.
But they had appropriated it years ago.
Exactly. Exactly. And, and that's part of the warrant article process, to get the reserve funds allocated for expenditure during the upcoming period, so... So this is, you know, this is just to show that, you know, we have the CIP plan in process, and just for individuals that don't get into this part of the town report, this is, this is what it's all about, and these are, these are the reserves that we have.
How long a timeframe do you normally work on when you start a capital account to the funding, through the funding...
It depends on the equipment. Right, right now, we're running, we run six years out.
The statute requires six, but...
And, you know, probably one of the big items is going to be, you know, the fire and safety complex, you know?
On this ladder truck, I believe that the university has paid in each year for a part, for a part of that, a good part of that cost of that fire truck.
Yeah.
So you're only seeing one half of the building, so you can't...
Should've been paid in full by now, you think?
I don't know. It's probably pretty close, but so it didn't really cost you.
Okay. All right. So we've got that discussed in that short presentation. Item number eight, do we have any unfinished or other business?
I don't believe so, unless anyone else can...
Anybody have anything they need to bring up?
Kind of a quiet time, so...
No, the only thing I had, I addressed earlier was just to remember that our taxes rates are going to be changed if they don't pay attention to the school...
You're exactly right. And you go to, you go to, you go to the school board meeting, you'll see about 50 people there.
Yeah, it's always quality.
I hope we're on top of it, and people are paying attention.
So...
Serious business.
Get out, understand what's being spent, and voice your opinion.
Absolutely.
Because these meetings, again, you have 50 people approving, approving for the whole town.
Well, we seem to have a habit of wherever the town goes up and goes down, the school goes up, so it sort of balances the budget.
School goes up every year.
Yeah.
You know, the population of school doesn't go up.
It goes down.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying the population doesn't go up. What's, what's the next step in the impact fee discussion? I mean, where do we go from here now?
Well, we have sort of a, like, I don't know.
Whatever direction?
We're going to, well, sort of. Well, sort of. I mean, we need to decide, probably, I think it would be best to wait to really get into this till after town meeting to see, you know, what the outcome is. But I mean, for example, take, take the information John gave us, look at the areas, um, of most concern. Then we can look at some of the maps and stuff that I have, like areas that are maxed out in terms of their growth and the potential growth. You know, we, we had mentioned specifically, at least in a microcosm, to look at Tenny Mountain Highway because you are getting a lot of commercial development out there. Uh, we don't have any big subdivisions on the radar, so the residential is kind of, kind of static right now.
Do you have activity on the Tenny Mountain Highway?
Well, tractor supply will be, right, that's been pending. No, there's, there's nothing new, but I mean, you will get CVS and tractor supply in the spring being built, so you're gonna have, and the new traffic light is up and I don't, did anybody go out there? Is it on blink yet?
No.
No? Because I spoke to DOT today, it's supposed to be on blink for a while, just to get everybody aware of it. See who's the lucky T-bone crash winner this time, but...
I think, like you say, over the next two or three months, we need to pull all the information together at our work meeting.
Right.
Discuss it, have a period of time set aside and then put together a formula and then after the town meeting, after the town election, then sit down with the town attorney and see, see what we have. Because again, if we don't, if we don't have plans for the funds and, and, you know...
I mean, I, I think I have a little discretionary money in my budget, probably not enough, but, you know, that's when we could speak with, with Attorney Rat again and see what we've got and then you put out the RFP or the RFQ for a consultant, when you know what you want them to look specifically for, so we're not wasting our money.
Well, I think, I think, I think we also wanna have some, uh, public meetings...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
To allow the, allow the citizens to have an input on what we're looking at.
Yeah.
And then, you know, based on that, get a, get a feel for where we would go after that.
Because once we implement these, these particulars, it's, you know, it's, it's not impossible to get rid of them, but you know the, the process to reverse it, it's, it'll take some time. So we need to know that we're making the right decision the first time.
Rhonda?
Yeah, I just have a question. If, if that's something that we can do before, um, the town meeting for the town to vote on? No.
No, 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 no. You don't wanna rush this and it's way too late.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
No, but I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, no, the warrant article.
In one, is it enough time?
No. I think, I think, I think everything, I think everything had to be, had to be in the last warrant article. I think it's the 12th or 14th of this month.
Right, and, and the public information piece is huge. There again, you wanna have everybody know, in the public know what it's about, so you don't wanna rush this.
We've been discussing this for quite a while and I just didn't know if we had three weeks in advance.
No, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't formulated anything at this point that we could bring to the town meeting.
That's what we need to know, you've got a whole year to work on this then.
Do we have to go to town meeting with this?
I don't, we don't.
We're looking for a method of implementation of our current ordinance.
It's already on our books, precisely.
You don't need...
It's not, it's not town, no, no, because the, the ordinance is there, but you want the input from people. No, it's part of the ordinance.
Well, well, I think...
That the town should be voted.
Well, well, again, again, I think, I think what we as a board need to do is sit down, discuss it. Is it really needed? We haven't had it up to this point. Why? What, what is the reason to implement it at this time? And what are we looking at to handle or take care of?
Right, what areas?
And, and what timeframe is it? Because again, if it's eight years out and you assess this now, three years from now, you gotta return those impact fees.
That's the thing, I mean, you've got the, the, um, safety complex, I mean, that all is coming up. The, the economic, um, playing field is, is, is just, um, all mucked up right now. I mean, it's just, that's the thing, economics and, and town issues are not static, so we, we do have to make sure that even though it's on the books as an ordinance, is this the proper time to do it? But that's all part of the conversation that we're gonna be having.
Exactly.
So...
Anything else?
I just think timing is, is everything.
No.
And this is a, in my estimation, a real rotten time to start talking about adding other fees to people coming in. We've made them make traffic lights, we've made them do everything else and, and one question I would like to know, do we have an active committee trying to put out feelers for people to come to Plymouth? Or do we just wait until they try to come in?
You mean, in terms of economic development, I, that's the purview of the select board. I don't, I don't know for one. Number two, I don't think so. I know that Grafton County Economic Development Corporation kind of serves that purpose.
Right, but that's the whole...
But that's the whole region, right.
Because every time somebody comes in here, we set a pit bull after them until they run out of town and go somewhere else.
Well, we should...
Well, we're not doing that anymore and it's not being done anymore, so I don't even think...
Hope so.
No, I'm, I'm always very, I mean, until somebody disobeys the rule, I'm not a pit bull. Until somebody, they have to abide by the rules, by right.
There are a lot of people that have stopped a lot of businesses from coming in here and, except for nonprofits and we seem to welcome them with open arms.
All right. Item number nine, public comments. We have no public present tonight. Item number 10.
Mike's not here, so...
Yeah.
I'm just gonna stuff it up to the plate.
Bert, you wanna?
I'm busy, Bert.
Do we have a second?
There are seconds.
All, Pat, second it, all those in favor? Aye?
The time is 7:00.
It's unanimous. We'll close the meeting at 7:08.